All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I would like to remind everyone to please be sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eckles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me, Almighty God? We thank you for today. We thank you for the blessings of life. And God, we just ask that you will continue to show your mercy and grace on those in Texas and in Florida who are recovering from the hurricanes. Pray for those who are assisting them, that you will just bless them this day. We just pray that you'll continue to be with our armed forces as they serve around the world. God, that you'll just provide them the protection they need. We pray your wisdom and knowledge on this council today with the decisions they have to make. We just ask that you'll continue to bless the mayor and his administration. God bless this city. Help us to keep our eyes on you. We promise to give you the praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on September 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 8th through the 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor. Unfinished business. Item number 8A is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance at 1554 Terrace Drive in District 1, Michael Pierce being the last known owner. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on August 15th. What is the Pledge of the Council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 322 Keeling Road in District 1, Cynthia W. Elston and the heirs of Troy L. Elston being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in February of this year. There have been no improvements to the structure. It has been cleaned out. It was a building permit taken out in August. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the Pledge of the Council?
I move to a, I move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
I'd like to entertain a motion to, or ask for unanimous consent to reconsider item number, item number nine. Is there any objections?
Second.
It's actually 8A.
Is it 8A?
8A.
Okay, item number 8A. I apologize. Okay, so there's a motion to reconsider and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider item number 8A, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
And what is the Pledge of the Council on this item?
First, I'd like to apologize to Mr. Harbison. I didn't read the memo. But he requested that this be tabled for 30 days, so I move that we table it for 30 days.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
Now, item number 10. Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 908 Penny Street in District 3, John T. Griffin, Matty Griffin, care of Patricia M. Williams being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in May of 2016. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the Pledge of the Council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, the last time I spoke with her, she told me that they was gonna try to fix it up, but they haven't really fixed it up, even started in the work on it, so just go on and abate it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license due to a change in ownership. Yavie LLC doing business as Jeffersons has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license at 529 Broad Street in District 3. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? If you would, sir, give us your name and address, please.
My name's David Carrula. I'm Tennessee resident, 214 Ward Circle, Brentwood, Tennessee. Just here to introduce myself to the members, and I've recently purchased the Jeffersons with my brother Nick. We own three other Jeffersons up in Tennessee. I've lived in Gadsden previously, up on the mountain, Southview Avenue. I'm hoping to return here shortly. Just here to answer any questions and ask for approval.
You're gonna give us counsel a free meal before you?
That's what it takes. I try not to, you know.
I was just kidding.
You're asking me to back, right? At least.
I was just kidding now.
I'm gonna say what Billy did. You live in my district, so I will give you the thing you need.
Yeah, I'll ask the burning question. How much money is on the wall?
So we have to, we have to count it for insurance, because if you guys remember, Gadsden burnt, I don't know, maybe it was seven years ago, but so now we have to count it for insurance purposes. The last count was like $6,400 or something. It's more than you think, yeah. It's quite, it's quite a bit. Dollars go missing, though, occasionally. It fluctuates. We tried a $5 wall at our Jacksonville location. That one didn't last very long.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone else wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
My district.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2018 budgets. This ordinance approves the following budgets. General fund is $51,928,491. Special revenue funds, $8,68,982. Debt service funds, $6,462,601. Enterprise and internal service funds, $12,279,468. And the capital projects fund, $8,050,000. The pay rates in the, in the pay plan adopted by Resolution R-403-04 as amended by R-238-10 shall be amended by Resolution to add steps 49 and 50. So we go from 48 steps to 50 steps to the pay plan for city employees. The proposed general fund budget provides that all entitled full-time employees shall receive a two-step increase, which is 2.5%. And again, these are, these are just highlights. I'm gonna give, before we, before we vote, I'm gonna give Lisa Osborne, I mean Lisa Rossar, the opportunity to come up and, and discuss the budget further.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Rossar. I'm the Finance and Revenue Director for the City of Gadsden, and I would at this time like to present the fiscal year 18 City of Gadsden Proposed Budget. We are looking, as Derek said, at a budget of a little over, almost $52 million. Of that amount, of course, our expenditures and our revenues are equal, because by state law, we are required to present a balanced budget, and it is balanced. Of that amount, though, however, we are having to take out $1,461,346 from our unassigned fund balance to be able to balance it this year. For those of you who are saying, well, what's unassigned fund balance? That's the reserves that the City of Gadsden has built and put aside when it is needed to be used. We have been very fortunate that over the years, we have been able to build those reserves. So those reserves this year are gonna have to be used for three items. One is the garbage fund transfer. We have to transfer money from our general account to our garbage fund every year to keep our garbage fund going, because it operates in quite a large loss. So that amount this year is $675,000. Also, we're having to purchase two garbage trucks this year. We had one to burn recently, and then we're just in need of a second one, so those two garbage trucks are at a cost of $550,000. And then before the council, there is an ordinance to give retirees a lump sum distribution or a lump sum bonus, a minimum amount of $300, and then some retirees will get much more than that, because it's based off of years of service. And that amount to do that is $236,346. So there again, those three items will be coming out of our unassigned fund balance. This budget does allow for a 2.5% across-the-board raise for all city, full-time city employees. To be able to do that, we have some city employees, there were 54 employees, that were either on a step 47 or a step 48. So in order to give all full-time city employees a raise, we are asking in an ordinance that the pay plan be extended from 48 to 50 steps. One other thing that is involved in your personnel, there's two big things involved in personnel, your insurance and your retire, your retirement. We were very fortunate this year, as our Blue Cross Blue Shield increase was only 1.5%, and that is low, considering for the increase that we've seen over the past years, that was a very small increase. However, our, we have an ordinance, an existing ordinance, that says that city employees will pay 20% of their premiums that are due to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and the city covers 80%. So because of that, the premiums that a city employee pays will be going up this year. If you are, and I have it somewhere in my hand, let me see if I can find it. If you are a full-time employee and you have family coverage, your, the increase will be going up $0.76 a week. So currently, we pay $4992 a week, and we'll be paying $50.68 a week. That's a total of $39.36 additional that you'll pay on the year for your insurance, very, very minimum amount. The other, single coverage is going from 2050 to 2082, which is $0.32 a week increase, which is $16.40 a year. So there again, very small increases in insurance. All city employees, there again, are getting a raise of 2.5%, which will be more than, more than enough, well, more than enough, to cover the increase they're gonna have on their insurance. The other thing that's involved in this is our retirement. Our retirement rate is going down this year, which we are very, very thankful for that. It's still high, but it is going down. If we give the lump sum distribution to retirees, our rate will go up 1.31%. So to keep our rate down, to keep it going down instead of going up, that's why we have elected, if you, as council members, approve the ordinance for the lump sum distribution, to pay it in a lump sum to the retirement system. That will cost us quite a bit less money than letting our, our rate go up on the year. There again, you know, personnel is, is the biggest part of your, is of your budget. Our operating costs went up a little over $100,000, which is a little less than 1% on the year, so it's very, very minimum. Capital, there again, your capital is, your garbage trucks, and there's also a dump truck that's involved in this. Transfer amounts were about the same this year, and outside agency amounts were almost about the same this year. So in a nutshell, we, I feel like it's a good budget, you know, and the only other thing that we have in this budget, we have two primary capital, two primary funds. You have your general operating fund, and the other is your capital improvement fund, which is the 1% sales tax that was passed in 2003. So that, this year, that, that budget is a little over $8 million. The revenue side of it from sales tax is about 3.1%. In this fund, in the existing capital improvement fund, a little over $5.2 million of this is used for debt. So it very, leaves you very lit. That's 73% of this budget, of this revenue, is used for debt, so it leaves you very little to do for other things. We budget $1 million for street improvements, $100,000 for striping, $300,000 for drainage improvements, $573,825 for building improvements, and another $860,000 for equipment, which is mostly police equipment, for new police cars. So the, before you, you do have an ordinance to increase the sales tax to, to an additional 1% this year, taking the city tax from 4% to 5%. You also have in front of you, adding a new capital improvement fund, number two, which there again, will be budgeted in this budget if that is passed. Any questions?
Lisa, again, let me make sure I've gathered the percentages. 73% of the current budget is being contributed to, to debt service, correct?
Yes, sir, in the capital improvement fund.
In the capital, capital improvement fund. And our personnel percentage this year, the, the expense for personnel related?
Is right at 70% of your general fund budget.
Right, 70%. So, I mean, you know, the point I always try to make with that is you can see that, you know, as a taxpayer, which I always try to say I'm a taxpayer first, I can see that before any of my dollars start going towards city services, there are obligations that are taking away from that, to the tune of about 30, 25 to 30% of my taxpayer dollar being contributed towards city services. Always concerning, as it should be. And so we have a fiduciary responsibility each year to try to manage those expenses, both the personnel expense and the debt service, to keep those as low and as manageable as possible. So again, that's, that's the point I always try to make.
And on the flip side of that, talking about debt service, in the new capital improvement fund, if it is passed, only 20% of that, of that new sales tax will be allocated towards debt payments. So, which is quite a bit different from what we currently have with our capital improvement fund.
But the personnel money that goes to personnel, that is the service for the city. That is our product. We are, we're a nonprofit organization.
We're not, we're not a nonprofit.
We're not, we're not for profit.
We're not a nonprofit.
Okay. Well, we have, we get the sales tax.
We're corporate, we're, we're, we're tax, we're a tax exempt.
We're tax exempt.
But we're a corporation, though.
Okay.
We're set up as a corporation.
Set up as a corporation.
We operate as a business. We are not a nonprofit organization.
Okay, well, you, we operate as a business, but per se, our product is the service to the city, to the citizens, and that service is provided by the personnel.
Well, sure, you've gotta have people to operate the city. Yes.
So, another thing else, go ahead, Mayor, sorry.
I was just gonna say, we do take care of our employees, in case there's anybody who thinks we don't. Actually, we've given 11 raises out of this, it's the 12th budget since I've been here, and we've given 11 raises, and we're paying 80% of the premiums for insurance and the retirement. And when I got here, it was way bad, and I'm just glad that we're able to do all that for our employees. So I'm, you know, we're, we got good employees, and we appreciate what they do.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a unique situation. We've got employees who hired in, many of them, years ago, with the understanding that the, that certain benefits and certain things would be made available to them over, over time. And that's fine. I mean, that's what you do to recruit, and that's what you do to, to get people to take on the responsibility of working in the public sector. But a common, a very common public sector problem is we don't have the latitude, as a private business, to address the revenue issue when it becomes a problem. And, and that's, that's difficult, because those expenses don't go away. I mean, we're, again, we're, we're at 70% of our general fund budget managing our operations. That's high. That's, it's, it's very expensive, and it's very high. And a business would do one of two things. They would generate new revenue to overcome that expense, or they would reduce the expense. And so we don't have that luxury, being a public, a public sector employer. So, so again, it's a, it's a balancing act that we have to do, and I, I want to commend Lisa and the mayor's office for many of the suggestions and some of the things that they've presented. What's also built into this, and we can't get into the weeds today, obviously, but what's, what's also within this budget are dollars for residential development. And we talked about it a little bit upstairs, a lot of smart spending related to help, helping to drive residential development within the city. There's also some monies there for STEM education-related items to help support the, the educational outcomes in the city. And there's also dollars in there for parent improvement, or parent involvement. We've got some creative, creative things we're gonna try to do to help encourage employers to allow their employees time off work to actually participate in parent-teacher meetings and things of that nature. So, so, you know, again, there, there are just a lot of smart things that we're gonna try to do to help ensure that, that as a city, we're supporting our growth and development.
That's all. The only other thing is I am asking for unanimous consent today, please, to approve this budget as well as all budget ordinances. Thank you.
Lisa, could you, could you tell us what's going on in Walker County in relationship to their budget that they?
I'd be very glad to. I've been keeping up very closely with, with Walker County. As you probably have read and are aware, Walker County borrowed some money years ago, and over the years, they have not made a single payment on that debt, not even an interest payment. So now, they have a very large payment that has got to be made, and they do not have the money to pay it. So, so they are facing bankruptcy, but if you know anything about municipal government, you can, you can declare bankruptcy, but you cannot bankrupt against debt. If you have, if you have bond issues, and the City of Gadsden has 11 bond issues, if you have bond issues, you know, those shareholders or those stockholders, they want their payment. So they're having to come up with creative ways of reducing their budget and trying to balance the budget, and their budget is due October the 1st as well. And last night, they had a special call meeting with their council. If you saw it, their council chambers were full with employees. They are having to make drastic cuts, both in services and with employees. They have cut already, all of their part-time employees or non-full-time personnel will be gone as of the 1st of the year. They will have no overtime whatsoever, and any overtime they have to have, you have to physically work 40 hours in the week before overtime will be granted. They're cutting back their bereavement time from three days to two days. They're gonna not allow the, the sale of sick time or vacation time. So they're, they're affecting their personnel, and their employees are not happy, but those people need to understand that if they bankrupt, you know, if they declare bankruptcy, those people will have nothing. They will have no retirement. They will have nothing. So they won't have jobs, they won't have anything. So, you know, so they're trying, and I, and I feel for them, because they're having to make some very, very hard, hard decisions, that this, not necessarily this council, but our council, has been faced with making those hard decisions before. Some of you were here when we had to make some of those hard decisions, and it's paid off. And so they're having to make decisions that are very, very difficult to make as, as leaders and as, in, in the administration, but it, these decisions that are having to make, they're having to make to keep their government going, you know, and Walker County is about as large as Etowah County. So it's, it's, it's very difficult.
Well, that's the reason I asked, that it was in a relationship to that, and I just didn't want us to lose the picture of why we're doing.
Of what can happen. It can.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I, and again, I appreciate Lisa's point about some of the benefits that, that we offer. You know, for a number, you know, I've been on the council for seven years, and each year, we recognize that we, we do offer some expensive benefit offerings, things that, you know, aren't necessarily unheard of, but sometimes you, you have to consider whether or not they're, they're affordable from a city perspective. But each year, we've managed to figure out a way to maintain them. And so I really don't, you know, I want to commend the mayor's office and the council for, for what we've done historically to make sure that we maintain a lot of those benefits, and each year that I've been on the council, we've given a, a pay increase. So, so again, we, we always, we always try to continue to, to push that and, and take care of our, our employees, even understanding that that number is at 70% of our general fund budget, so.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask unanimous consent, please, since we've had the public hearing already on the budget just now, that we do the, the public hearing was on the budget, we admit we adopt it, plus the next three ordinance, B, C, and D, next three ordinances, please.
All right, so let's, let's address these in?
Individual, okay, that'll be famous. I make it motion, we do the public hearing, adopting fiscal year 2018 budget.
Second.
All right, so there's a motion to adopt the, to suspend the rules and consider the general fund budget ordinance today. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We do not have unanimous consent.
Can I just say, Councilman Worthy, we discussed this upstairs. How can you sit there and look at your fellow employees on the police officers in the back, back there, knowing that they're gonna miss out on this raise for one week? The, the finance department has already told us that we need to get this done today. She asked us to do it today. We've all had ample time to look over this, and this is the way it's been done the last 11 budgets as I've been on. I just don't see how you can sit there and look at these guys in the back, you know, that work, work side by side in the police department, knowing they're not gonna get a raise for the first week, and knowing that this budget's not gonna change from where it is now.
Johnny, with all due respect, I told you upstairs that I would not let the budget come up today, okay? So I don't know why you going on and going on in grandstanding, because I have problems with the budget. And I've expressed those problems, and I told you all I would not let it come up. So it's no sense us keep? So, it's no sense us keep talking about it. It'll be voted on next week, and like you said, it would probably pass, but I won't be voting for it. And the employees will still get their raise in October.
They won't get the, their whole raise they're supposed to be getting, because it's not their time.
It won't get, it won't, yes, it will.
We're not going, we can't go back and do it. We have to do it when it's passed. And I just don't see what, I mean, you're not going to gain anything by this. And it's going to hurt those guys.
It's not going to hurt them. They still going to get their raise.
Mr. President, since we're in a stalemate, can we probably move on, I guess?
Absolutely. That would probably be the best thing for me, too.
So, we have four other ordinance to consider. The next one's a special, the ordinance addressing the special revenue funds. And the amount here, again, is eight million, sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred, eighty-two dollars.
That's ordinance B, correct?
Yeah, that's ordinance B. All right. All right, clerk, will you take the vote on this? Oh, I entertain, I'm sorry, I entertain a motion that we consider this?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider this ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no, consent is not granted.
These are the resolutions, right? I mean, I'm sorry, these are all ordinances, correct?
I'm sorry?
These are all ordinances, and they're all, they're all public hearings.
They're not public hearings, but they're all ordinances that require a first reading and a second reading, unless the rules are suspended.
Okay. All right. The next one's the debt service fund, six million, four hundred, sixty-two thousand, six hundred, one dollars.
This is ordinance number C, correct?
Yes, sir. I entertain a motion that we consider this one today.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider this ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Consent is not being granted.
Okay. Item number twelve D, it's the enterprise and internal service funds, twelve million, two hundred, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred, sixty-eight dollars. Entertain a motion that we consider that one today.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Consent is not granted.
All right. Item number twelve E, the capital projects fund, the amount of eight million, fifty thousand dollars. Entertain a motion that we consider this one today.
So moved.
Second.
You said E?
Which one is that?
You talking about?
The capital projects fund.
That's the one, just did with D.
D.
That's D.
We did the enterprise and internal services.
That's the one we just did.
All four of the public hearing was A, B, and C were ordinances, all of those failed.
Now, we're down to thirteen now.
One is amending. One is amending.
Yeah, and then the other one is adding the?
The other one is establishing.
I got you. Okay, we're done.
C is amending.
That would move to resolution.
All right. Item number twelve B is an ordinance amending section seventy-four dash two-three-one.
Mr. President, we've all reacted on that. We need to move on to thirteen, please.
Thirteen is our next.
Thirteen is our next.
I apologize.
We did A, B, C, and D for item twelve. We worked through those.
All right. Item number thirteen is a resolution amending section one of resolution number R dash four-zero-three dash zero-four, as amended by resolution number R dash two-thirty-eight dash one-zero regarding steps in the pay plan. The pay plan consists of twenty-five pay ranges. This increases the number of steps of each range from forty-eight to fifty, with a difference of one and a quarter percent between each step. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, this was brought to us by the finance department, also the personnel department to add these two steps.
And the reason why I would be voting no on this one is because I don't have a problem with the employees getting a raise, a two-point-five percent raise, but when we pass this, this would give us, the city council, and the mayor a raise, and I'm not in agreement with that.
And I think it's important to note that none of us are, to be quite honest. I don't think, and if there was another way to ensure the across-the-board increase, because we've considered lump sums, which we can't do, which would have avoided any of the top, any change in the pay plan, if we could have done that, we would have avoided this. Again, I don't think anybody's in favor of it, but this is something that we have to do to ensure the across-the-board increase for every step in the pay grade. So.
There's nothing set in stone that says we have to take that raise ourselves. We can always give it back.
And we can, and that is something that's being considered. But this is the only method that we have in place currently to ensure an across-the-board increase. Now, there is some discussion on how we can fix this going forward, so we don't have to do this again. But this is where we are at this point. All right? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
All right. Item number fourteen is a resolution authorizing creation and change of management employees' job classifications. This adds the classifications of athletic supervisor and changes the following job titles: museum curator to museum director, video production assistant to public affairs coordinator, special assistant recycling to recycling coordinator. The pay ranges remain the same, and the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number fifteen is a resolution authorizing change of the fire department job classifications. This changes the job classification of emergency medical services supervisor to emergency medical services chief, and the pay range remains the same. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number sixteen is a resolution authorizing a one-step lump sum payment to retirees and pensioners and beneficiaries of deceased retirees in accordance with Act 2017-367 of the State of Alabama Legislature. This permits the city to participate in the one-time bonus for eligible recipients, equal to two dollars per month for retirees with twenty-five years of service, which would be six hundred dollars. It also provides a minimum payment of three hundred dollars for those less than twenty-five years. The city is responsible for the cost of the bonus with no funding provided by the state. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Ask for roll call vote, please.
Okay. Chair, I'm sorry, clerk, will you take the vote?
I move that we adopt.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote? Roll call vote.
Okay. Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Worthy?
Abstain.
Eccles?
Yeah.
Billingsley?
Yes.
Cannon?
Abstain due to the fact I draw a state retirement check from the city of Gass, please.
And Councilman Reed?
Abstain, my wife's a city employee, retired.
The resolution does carry. The vote is four yeses and three abstentions.
Thank you. So, clerk, I'll offer up as a point of discussion, that as you can see, there's really no opposition to the increase. I think both the mayor and the council, though, do have an issue with the fact that the state legislature took this issue up, didn't pass on any funding to support it, and never really discussed with us the issue before we were asked to pay for it. So, as Lisa mentioned before, what we've done to ensure that we don't negatively impact our retirement rate is we've agreed to pay the lump sum, and we're taking that money out of our undesignated monies, which is essentially what we have in the bank. So, again, just to be clear, nobody up here is against the lump sum payment. We all want to fight for, and we'll fight for, every dollar that we can get for retirees. But when you're going to be asked to pay for something, you'd at least like to be asked and have that discussed with you before it's actually passed on and voted on. Item number seventeen is a resolution authorizing special use permit to AT&amp;T. This is for equipment modifications to the existing wireless communication facility located at forty-two ninety old Pump Station Road. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number eighteen is the resolution authorizing agreement with SNME. This is for assistance to the city with environmental testing and permitting required for expansion of the C and D landfill boundary. The amount is one hundred, ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Items number nineteen and twenty are ordinances presented today for first reading. They're authorizing conveyance of property. The city solicited sealed bids for two properties. Larry Powell has offered to pay fifty-one hundred dollars for the property at three-oh-four North Twenty-Ninth Street, and forty-nine hundred dollars for the property at eight Marston Avenue. These ordinances were presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on them next week. New business? Is there any new business? Department reports, committees, boards? Remarks by the mayor and council? Councilman Reed?
It's amazing, but I absolutely have nothing to say. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Cannon?
Yes, we've set the date for the treats on Wall Street. It'll be October the twenty-sixth. It starts at five and end at seven. We'll be blocking roads off about two-thirty or three, so there's a lot of preparation and stuff goes into that right there. We're looking probably five thousand to fifty-five hundred kids again this year. It's been going on probably forty years, I guess. Mayor, do you ever remember going when you was a kid?
No.
Okay. So, I know it's been going on forty years.
The country was young when he was.
We didn't have.
I want to thank my councilpeople that helped voted for the budget, that voted for those. I just felt it was the right thing to do. We've all studied this budget over and over, I hope we have anyway, and they gave it to us from plenty of time, and like I said, there'll probably be a little while before the employees get the raise after next week. If it does, vote in next week. That's all I have.
Councilman Billingsley?
Yes, I was hoping to have this approved so we could vote today, because I will not be here next week, but I am in favor of this budget. So, it does not have everything in it that I would like to have, but, you know, nothing is going to be perfect for anybody. So, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Councilman Worthy?
Yes. I want to thank everyone that came out to my community meeting on Thursday, and I got a lot of feedback from the community. They do not want us to go up on the sales tax, and part of the reason that they gave is they're concerned that the money would not trickle down to their community, and what I'm talking about, not just the black community, but the poor white community also. So, we are trying, and we have a lot of problems with water drainage and stuff that's been going on, coming off the falls, off a knock a little mountain, down from the village all the way over to Hill Street, Hillier, and all over, that's been going on, just messing people's yards up in their houses. And we, me and the engineer, myself, we've been working on some of the drainage, but it's going to take a lot more to get all that done. So, but I've had two people that tell me they was in agreement with the sales tax, but they didn't live in my district. So, majority of everybody else I've spoken with at my community meeting, they're not in favor of it, even though I went down the list and gave them the reasons why. So, I really, you know, at least we had reasons to give to them. But I just said, and I'm going to keep doing what I think is right for the whole community. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Eccles? Councilwoman Toles?
I have a district meeting this coming Monday, six P.M. at the Antioch Family Life Center. Ask and all the constituents or anyone else that's interested to come out. Mike Hilton, Public Works, will be speaking.
Okay. Mayor?
Talk a little bit about some of the finances. When I got here, we owed seventy million dollars approximately, had a million and a half in the bank, and seven and a half million a year in payments. We've not raised taxes. That was done in oh-three, the last time it was done. And the administration then didn't tell anybody what they were going to do with the money, so nobody knew. We also inherited a twenty-nine million dollar bond responsibility on Gesin City High School. And, you know, we do trash pickup. Most cities charge you twenty-five to fifty dollars. They come out and look at it and tell you what they'll charge you to pick up the trash. We do that free. We pay close to two million dollars in roads every year, and we got plenty more that we need to work on, rebuild, and correct problems with. And so, there's a big list that you can see on TV of all the things that we do. We have a lot of debt still, but we're going to come out of it. And I do want to say, for a few that think that the city is in the development business, we're not in the development business. We own the property across the street, and we're redoing one building. We own the property. We're working with people from Birmingham who did a development that Homewood called Soho. They also did a development Midtown Twenty-Twenty at the new baseball park in Birmingham. And also, what we're doing is, we paid the architect. That's all we paid. We own all the land, and if they bring people here to locate here, business, or whatever it is they bring, we own the land, so we'll either sell it and get money, or we will lease it and get money. So, the city is not in the development business. We happen to own the land, and that's all we're doing.
Mayor, can you tell us what cities around us that still left close, that hadn't gone up to ten percent? I think everybody has.
All the cities in the county are at ten percent. I think Rainbow City is not at ten percent.
But everybody else has done gone to ten.
Yes. But you can't expect, with the debt we still have, you can't expect to keep furnishing all these things that we do free, and there's a lot of things free that we furnish, and we're glad we can. And I'm glad we could give raises to our employees, and same with helping them on the insurance, because that is sort of better than giving the raises payday, besides the raise, I mean. But we, you know, we want to take care of our employees. We got a lot of good ones, police and fire, dangerous jobs. But we're going to do what we can do, and we're going to stay financially sound, so that's the way it is.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, and there's all kind of points that can be made. I think it's important to note a couple of things. The finance department is prepared. Because our budget, to some degree, is tied to politics, the passing of it, they're prepared. They're prepared to present alternate scenario, to present an alternate scenario in terms of the budget, if we're, you know, not able to pass this budget, which I'm certain we will be. But the thing that, you know, that you should know about that is the alternate budgets that the finance department generally presents, they're not nearly as favorable as what's been presented. There's not nearly as much that gets done, and we're not able to accomplish nearly as much. Mayor, you go ahead.
I did forget this. There's between four hundred and six hundred jobs available in Etowah County. A lot of the auto suppliers, they can't get people to work. They'll hire ten, hoping they can keep three. And they pay anywhere from ten to twenty dollars an hour, and the ones up around twenty, they also get benefits. It's the same way here at work. We hire a lot of people in the summer to work, and some will work two days, not even come back and get their check. And I've said this before, if you've got a child or a teenager, eighteen or older, they can get a job if they want one, and can you imagine how much times the money would turn over, them shopping and buying groceries and doing all that, if you had about 500 or 600 more people working? Anyway.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So again, we, we apologize to, to anybody that, uh, that may be bothered by the, the amount of detail we tried to go into with the budget, but, but I honestly, we think it's important to get people to the point to where they understand it, to be as transparent as we can potentially be. And, uh, and I know, I know it's frustrating, but, uh, but again, I, I wanna commend the mayor and this council for, for being fiscally responsible here over the last seven years at least. Um, I mean, 'cause we could highlight a number of things that, 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 that the, this administration's done since being in office. We've reworked some bad debt that the city had incurred years ago. We, we worked, reworked those issues, those bond issues. Um, we've reduced the amount of, uh, the debt service payments, uh, and as you can see, we're being very responsible about the amount of the upcoming budget that is going to be diverted towards or, or earmarked for debt service. We're being very responsible about that, and we're ensuring that future councils will have to be good stewards over the finances of, of the city. And that's important because through our election cycles, you never know what you're gonna get. So it's in, it's important to make sure that those peoples, those people have their feet held to the fire, even when they don't understand why, why it's having to be done. So, so again, we do appreciate all of, all of the support. Going up on taxes is never something that anybody's excited about, uh, but, but again, we, you know, it's something that, uh, you know, when you start talking about our drainage issues, Heath could probably talk all day about the amount of money that would be needed, uh, to address all of the drainage issues that we have in the, in the city. Um, when you talk about infrastructure, what we spend on paving roads is just a drop in the bucket, and we'll never knock a dent in it unless we generate some new revenue. Uh, when you look at our, our landfill issues, at the rate that we have to tear down houses, we're not tearing them down because we want to. We're tearing them down because we have to. And at the rate that we're putting stuff into the landfill, you know, there's got, something's gotta happen, something's gotta move, and we have to respond to that. And, uh, and also, we're not very green as a community, so we're having to, to take that on as well. Uh, and, and then, of course, the grass cutting issues. Uh, you know, we, we have to address that in a timely fashion. That means purchasing new equipment. That means hiring new people. That means en- encountering a lot of new expense, and to drive that expense number up without re- new revenue, you're shooting yourself in the foot. So, so again, we, we want people to understand that it's not something that we wanna do. It's really something that has to be done at this point.
Council president, I, I might be wrong about this, but I think it was in '03, the last time sales tax went up.
That's correct.
I mean, it was three or four right in there, you know, so it's been 15 years that we've been going without doing that.
Yeah. Okay. So again, thanks to the finance department and the mayor's office for all the hard work that they did in kind of boiling this down for us and getting it to the point that we could understand it, so. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.